Good evening, everyone. I'm Shannon Rutherford, the Town Planner for Farmington. We're going to start this evening's Plan and Zoning Commission meeting with a roll call of the members in attendance here in the council chambers. Go in the order that my list is. Matt Hutvogner.
Present.
Patrick Carrier.
Here.
Mike Grabulis.
Here.
Scott Halston.
Here.
Liz Sanford.
Here.
James Rockleff.
Here.
Mike Walsh.
Here.
And we were formed earlier. Inez St. James is absent this evening, and there are no commission members online. So with that, Mr. Carroll, turn it over to you.
Thanks, Shannon, and welcome, everybody, to the April 25 TPZ meeting and our first in-person meeting in quite a while in over two years. So good to see the commissioners in person again. And to start, Mike, you'll be filling in as a voting member for Inez in her absence. So.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. So let's let's get to business. New business, first item, Sign Pro, Inc., 282 Scott Swamp Road, sign application to change People's Bank signed M&amp;T Bank.
Okay, and this particular applicant is online this evening.
Great.
So Tracy, I've got your full presentation. I can scroll through as you need me to.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Thank you for hearing my application this evening. As you may know, People's United Bank was recently bought by M&amp;T Bank, and as such, they're going to be rebranding all of their Connecticut locations. One of the first ones we have on the agenda is the Route 6 Scott Swamp Road location in Farmington. We're going to be replacing the existing non-illuminated pin mount letters with white M&amp;T pin mount letters in two locations, in R1 here and R2. And after some back and forth with Shannon, we're going to be replacing the freestanding sign with an externally illuminated, low-profile monument sign as shown here. And then we're the door banding. We are only doing the green and yellow door banding at the bottom, and it's one side is showing as you're walking in, the other side is showing as you're walking out. So that's all going to be second surface. So inside the door. And then the directional signs that are existing, we're going to just be replacing with newer signs. They're pretty much like for like, you know, just giving people direction on where to park and, you know, where the drive up information is. And the clearance signs, and again, drive up teller, drive up ATM, I believe, is one of them. Yep, there we go. And that's everything. I don't know if you have any questions?
All right, time for commissioner questions. Patrick?
No questions.
Mike?
No, no questions.
Matt?
No, no questions.
Liz?
No questions. Very thorough. Thank you.
James?
No questions.
And Mike?
No questions.
Okay, any discussion of any kind? Have a motion in a second, please?
What, for me again?
I'm just looking.
Okay, and we don't have to state our name this time, right?
Correct.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the sign application by Sign Pro, Inc., for 282 Scott Swamp Road to change the People's Bank sign to an M&amp;T Bank.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right, our next application is Luis Vasquez, 81 South Main Street, change in ownership from Tap Rock to Puente American Latino Pub.
Hi.
Hi. Come up to the podium, introduce yourself, and just explain briefly what you are proposing to do, and I can jump in if needed.
Well, good evening, everybody, and I appreciate the time. My name is Luis Vasquez, and we're proposing a change of ownership from Tap Rock to Puente, which is going to be our restaurant. The concept's going to be American Latino cuisine. We're just proposing a retenant to the Tap Rock Restaurant space. The property ownership and use remain the same. I'm just reading off of this, just so everybody. And let me see, the property ownership and use remain the same. However, the tenancy is changing. In 1994, the TPC approved a restaurant used a dislocation with a condition that special permit is limited to this specific applicant. Any change in use, tenancy, or ownership will require approval of the commission. Therefore, the applicant has submitted the application for review documenting the change in tenancy. There are no exterior changes to the building other than signage, which is the next item on the agenda. We are not, the restaurants, basically, the building's going to stay the same. We're not doing any additional or changes to the capacity of the guests. And we're changing the signs. We had a meeting with ADRC last Thursday, and they gave the approval on the signage as well. And that's basically all I have. You guys have any questions?
Thanks so much. Patrick, any questions?
Yeah, the only question I have is I was reading through that prior approval, and on the outside, I believe it said something about only lighting on the wall, and there is rope lighting there now. And I'm assuming you're planning on keeping that. Am I correct? Is that what it was in the approval?
Yeah, there's a, there's two outside the sign that's in the front part of the building where Route 177, it has the the goosenecks illuminating the sign. And then the one when you go in the restaurant on the side has the lighting right there. That's the one you're referring to, I think.
It needs the lights on the patio for string lights.
Yeah, the patio light. So there's string lights on the patio.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So I was just wondering if you even knew that that wasn't part of the original approval.
Probably because the patio wasn't there in the beginning. Am I allowed to talk from there?
You can, but you should go to the, you should, yes, but.
Yeah, no, I wasn't aware about the about the. Yeah, we're not worried about that. So what would that require? Do we need to submit for?
Yeah, no, I'm just posing the question.
It's one of those that I think staff reviewed it. And Tap Rocks had the lighting, the overhead lighting for for the patio for quite some time. If there's a concern with the hours that it's on, then I know they sometimes had been left on a little longer than others, but staff had reviewed it. It was one of those, they're using it for patio as long as it's being occupied.
Yeah.
Fine, but when it's not occupied, then I think we had we had recommended to the owner that the lighting be turned off so that it's not on kind of all night.
We're not extending hours of operation as well. This is more, it's going to be more of a restaurant approach than than a bar per se, you know?
And I'm assuming there was no, nobody called on that.
There's been no complaints about it. But again, the lights, I think, sometimes are better about getting turned off than than not. So it would certainly be, and it's within the commission's purview. I think there's a point to it. If it's actually being used for patio seating in the summertime and folks are out there, and obviously you want that lighting serves a purpose. If they're, if the patio is not being used, like say in the winter, is it okay to still have the lights on, or would you like them off? Or just as long as it's, the lights are shut off when the business is closed?
Right.
Is that sufficient? So that is something that, you know, could be discussed among among you.
All right. Well, my feeling is that there's no, nobody complained about it. It's probably, it's not really, I mean, it looks good, in my opinion, of just bringing it up. So.
Certainly.
That's it for me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike?
Yeah, no, I didn't, you know, I know the the lighting on the patio would come up previously in this commission. And I mean, I don't think there's any kind of time constraints that the patio lights be on. It doesn't really affect anything. Signs look good. They're like for like. So questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
No, my only questions are capacity and lighting. And you answered those. And I agree, I'm going to be delighting on the patio as well.
Liz?
My question was just, you are going to stick to more restaurant, little less bar. So hours were not going to be somewhere. I thought I had heard the word club as opposed to pub. And club made me think, hmm, is this Unionville or?
No, no, there's, there's.
Saw that on Facebook, too, but that's.
No, it's going to be a, the word pub, I mean, it's restaurant with with a bar, you know, but we're not extending hours of operation by any means. Yeah.
Yeah, looks good.
And the word Puente means bridge, if you didn't know.
I think that's cool. I agree.
And that everybody knows that. So.
I, yeah, my only question revolves around the parking for the establishment itself. It's always been kind of an issue. What are you doing with like overflow parking and?
Well, there's there's.
We're building a three-decker.
We wish. No, there's a verbal agreement with the with the landlord that we can use parking across the street, you know? Obviously, if it gets approved, then when when we start operating, we're going to be very proactive and to make sure that we don't have any issues with parking and, you know, that we we have to come up with a plan of action. We'll put it on the website and we'll we'll get creative just to make sure that we are in keeping with with the regulations and it doesn't become an issue, you know, for sure.
Excellent. Thank you.
No questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Can I have a motion in a second?
I'll give a shot.
I like to make a motion for Luis Vasquez at 81 Main Street to accept the application for change in ownership from Tap Rock to Puente American Latino Pub.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion, commissioners? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion passes unanimously. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
We'll see you at the restaurant. Good luck. Thank you.
Do we have to vote on the sign, too?
Yeah, the sign.
Yeah, it looks like it's.
The sign's a separate application. So are you, are you doing the sign?
One more, one more time.
Wow, it doesn't come off.
All right, our third application is Art Effects Signs, 81 South Main Street, sign application to change to Puente American Latino Pub.
Hi, my name is Shadi Kessing. I'm with Art Effects. I'm here to answer any questions you may have with respect to the refacing of Tap Rock to Puente. Basically, what we're doing are overlay panels, aluminum diamond overlay panels with dimensional letters on top, same size. And there's three signs. They're all wall mounted.
And just, just a quick side note, it's just as far as the design of the sign itself, this is my wife Carrie, but the metal letters and the rivets in the letter, you know, they're, it's all paying a little homage to to the bridge. It's just a symbolism with with the bridge, and hopefully people notice it, you know?
And this, as Mr. Vesc has made reference to, it was discussed with ADRC last Thursday evening. I haven't had a chance to the meeting on it yet, but it was approved unanimously. They had no, no comments, no concerns. They were actually quite complimentary of the sign.
Great. Anything else you'd like to add?
I have nothing further.
Questions, Patrick?
Nope, everything's staying the same. So no questions.
Mike?
Looks good. No questions.
Thank you.
Liz?
Looks great. No questions.
Thank you.
No questions.
No questions.
All right. Well, that was easy. So motion in a second, please?
I think you got to give Matt another try.
I don't know, Liz looked ready to give it a go, too.
My turn? Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the sign applica.
I prefer the wording, if we're if we're voting on it, it's approved.
Please.
And so the other ones where we're accepting to set a public hearing, then we use the word except to just receive the application. But if we're going to.
Okay.
Approve it, and we'll use the word approve if we can.
I need the coaching. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the artifacts sign for 81 South Main Street, the sign application to change to Puente Americano, American Latino Pub.
I second.
Any discussion, commissioners? Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Thanks so much. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, our next application is Ready Imaging, Inc., 46 Farmington Avenue, sign application to change Citgo sign to golf.
Good evening, all. My name is Chris Hall Walker. I'm the owner of Ready Imaging, and the purpose of our application is that the gas station is changing branding from Citgo to Golf. So in the brand book that was provided, there was an error in the original draft. In the original draft, it did say that the sign was going to be internally illuminated. That was a mistake on the big red parts. We did send over a corrected version. We also, in the original version, had inverted pump toppers, which is a type of advertisement that goes on dispenser. We removed that as well. So we did submit an updated version. I'm not sure if it.
It hadn't reached them, but it is here. So if we want to, we can scroll through the the slides that you had provided, and then hit on those those elements as we go through.
So the first page is kind of an overview of what the site's going to look like. As you can see, the main ID is changing from Citgo to Golf, but everything is staying the same size. The second page is just to simply reflect that the canopy is not changing, that everything is remaining white. So the third page just shows the clearance decals and the flag signs. The flag signs are changing color. Before, they were the Citgo colors. Now, they're going to be orange and white for Golf. So the next page is the dispensers. So as you can see, it's going from Citgo to Golf. It's, we added where the price toppers are going. And then before that initially, right above the price toppers, there was a hanging sign that was a type of advertisements for Golf. But we, when we spoke to Golf and told them that no advertisement was required or would be approved, they removed it. So you can kind of see like the overall layout, but relatively the same. So the next sign is the main ID sign. So everything is staying the same size. This is a sign that was originally internally illuminated, but then we changed it. So it is external. So the lamps are staying the same. Everything's staying the same, just the faces are getting swapped out. Next page is just the type of trash cans they're going to be using. Golf is very strict on that. And this, this just shows that we're not putting any other, what they consider POP, point of purchase visuals.
Paint colors on this one, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. Instead of Citgo uses dark gray, these are blue and light gray.
So it's just paint colors?
Yep. So that's really it. If you guys have any questions?
Um, okay, so if I understand it correctly, any of the concerns that were mentioned in the agenda review pretty much have been changed, right? Is that what I heard?
Correct.
Yeah. I'm, no, no questions. Thank you.
No questions. Thank you.
No questions.
No questions. Thanks.
No questions.
No questions.
Okay, any discussion? Motion in a second, please?
I'll make the motion to, oh, where am I here? I'll make the motion to accept the sign application by Ready Imaging, Inc., at 46 Farmington Avenue, to change from a Citgo sign to a Golf sign as presented.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Fine, right along here. All we have left are some acceptance of applications. So first one, Trump, Inc., 1 Johnson Ave, accept application for special permit and site plan. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
I'll get it right this time. I move that we accept the application for special permit from Trump at 1 Johnson Avenue and site plan approval for expansion of manufacturing building in the CR zone and schedule a public hearing. Recommended hearing date of May 9, 2022.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Next one, Amber and Michael Sporito, 7 Orchard Road. Motion in a second.
I'd like to make the motion to the, to accept the application by Amber and Michael Sporito at 7 Orchard Road for a special permit to raise poultry, 14 hens in the R20 zone and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of May 23, 2022.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Last one, Patricia Revel and David Donaldson, 17 Pinnacle Ridge Road. Motion in a second, please?
I'll make the motion to accept the application for Patricia Revel and David Donaldson at 17 Pinnacle Ridge Road for special permit for expansion of home within the Ridgeline Protection Zone, R40 zone, and schedule a public hearing. Recommended hearing date of May 23, 2022.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
Okay. Last item officially on the agenda is the 2022 CROG Regional Planning Commission appointments. And this isn't so much an appointment as it is a volunteer. We should have one member of the commission sitting in on our regional planning committee. And I did forward it to everyone, the information, the meetings, I think they meet quarterly. So they've already met in March. So it's just two more meetings, three, excuse me, three more meetings for 2022. They are currently meeting virtually. So it's not, you don't have to be there in person. As is explained in the in the information that had been sent out and that came into us, it's really about having Farmington representative and hearing about what's going on, what other area communities are doing. And Garrett and I, the planning division, get some of it, but some of it comes in through through this avenue as well. So again, if anyone has the time, we do certainly recognize that many of you are more than one committee already in commission. So but if there is anyone that's interested, then it truly, it's a volunteer, we'll submit your name, and then you'll be added into the agenda and get the information. If you have questions, we're, you know, we're happy to answer questions or track down information for you.
I have a question. You know what? I missed that part. I didn't read it, actually. So what is it? So it's quarterly?
It's a, it's a quarterly meeting at the Regional Planning Commission. So it's with with CROG. You may actually, do you have more information on this than?
Yes, just for reference, anytime the town does a zoning tax amendment, I think zone changes, too, it gets referred to the Regional Planning Commission to accept or reject within, or write a recommendation for whether it's in harmony with the CROG Regional Plan of Conservation Developments. We have our own, the state has one, two, and progress make sure that all the lane decisions that affect whole towns are in compliance with that plan. It's a great, it's a good spot to share ideas, see what other towns are doing. As Shannon said, especially since you see a lot more tax amendments that maybe say, oh, that might be a good fit for Farmington, or something like that.
So it's a bunch of towns? Is it all the towns?
Yes, all the towns in the in CROG, which is Capitol Region Council Government. I think it's 24 towns.
Yes. So there's, there's months, there's six.
I think there's six COGS.
So.
And.
So it's, yeah, so it's not the entire state of Connecticut. It's a regional. So it's Hartford County plus a little bit around, right? So it's, it's a little more than just our county. Yeah.
It's interesting. I just, I can't commit to Thursdays, like prior commitments on those nights. But they have some interesting trainings that I sat through previously when I stepped in for Matt Fox.
That was my, I was interested, but that was my question is, is there preparation that you have to do before the meeting? Or you just, is it just attending the meeting and kind of listening to what's being presented?
I don't know specifically. My guess is there's probably.
I just logged in.
Okay.
I never spoke or anything.
Got it.
It's probably similar to this, where they send you a documentation ahead of time.
Sure.
And they'll probably discuss it.
Okay.
And I'm assuming a summary as well, so that you don't have to plow through like 30 pages of application. There's a, you know, one paragraph summary. So.
Sure.
So there probably is a little bit. But.
Right, right.
Because the idea, you know, it's the intent of some, you know, participation and and then feedback if there's information to share with us.
Sure.
You can add my name to the list.
Fight you for it.
That's great. Thank you. Anyone else? Because there's, there's room for a position and an alternate, I believe. So if there's anyone else interested, I think we can take two names.
Anybody interested?
All right, I'll do the alternate. The worst, but.
Just make sure Matt doesn't get sick on a Thursday.
Thank you both. We appreciate it. Okay, it brings us to planner's report. And there's a handful of things. I don't think it, you know, I didn't have anything actually written. So I'm going to do two updates with respect to questions that some folks have had recently. And then Garrett's going to introduce some text amendments for, since we have the time, since we're here in person. And then we'll get them emailed out with the idea that they get on the next agenda to accept and then start to get some of this stuff through on public hearing. But if you want to go ahead and open, I am chatting. So the 177 Bridge, we've had a few questions about where that stands. The work is going to commence. I think they've started, put up some signs again with, we see the end of work and begin work signs along 177 and down Mill, Mill Street. So that is going to be starting up. They do have some structural work to do on the bridge, and the bridge is scheduled to be painted this summer. It is going to be painted, I believe, I've been informed, it's going to be black. So it'll get stripped out, cleaned, and then it'll be a nice fresh coat of black paint, is my understanding. The structural work will have to be done first. There are a few repairs that still need to be made. Some of that is what got us stalled last year. So they're working through that, and then they should be ready to go. But I guess they, they said there, there's a three-year project, they're 18 months in, there's 18 months to go. So that's the update. The other one is the Route 6 Park and Ride, the one out by South Road and Two Mile Road. So that is also well underway. Some of the things that have stalled with that have to do with supply chain issues. I think there's some gates. It sounded like there's some gates or kiosk type things that have to go in. And some of the parts for those things are stuck in the supply chain, and that's impacting that getting installed and getting that fully opened. They also then have to, once all that's in, they'll be able to open the lot. It'll be another month or two after the lot opens before Fast Track is rebooted here. Again, it has to do something with the bus contracts with the state. So once this is brought in line, then they'll, it goes out to contract, and and then they get added, this, this particular location gets gets added in. It's kind of, it's one of those, it's 90% there. It's this last 10% is, we're just going to have to be patient with, but it is coming. So if folks are asking, asking questions, at least you've got a little more of an answer for them.
Is that for bustle, like bus traffic only, or?
No, I believe you'll be able to, it's for commuter, you know, share rides.
Yeah, okay.
If you wanted to, like, meet for a game, and you're going into Rensselaer or whatever, or into into the city, you could, you know, meet there, or even into Boston, you could, no different than any other.
Right, right, like commuter lot, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, okay. And so that's all I had for you for my planner's report. I'll turn it over to Garrett to chat about some of the the text amendments that we've been tinkering with. Well, we, the he part of we, Garrett, Garrett came in and I said, here you go. We've got a laundry list, and I can also say that they've been done for a while, and they've been sitting in Zinns and Vax. So tonight was a perfect night to dust them off.
Hello, everyone. Just introduced myself. My name is Garrett Deagle. I'm the assistant town planner. I've been with town for about three months. Before that, I worked for the town of Plainville for about five and a half years. I started as assistant planner, then I was the town planner, and then I moved up to Farmington. So I haven't met all of you yet. I think we had the commissioner training a month ago, and that was about it. So, so we got three text amendments that we're going to discuss tonight. One is about the effective date, one is about parking residential areas, and the third one is about chickens. So real quick, the first one is just the effective date. This is a very basic amendment. So, real quick, the first one is just the effective date, this is a very basic amendment. It essentially establishes an effective date of any regulation change as being fifteen days. After the published notice of decision, which is the standard appeal period for any decision. And this is only used when the commission does not include an effective date as part of their approval of a regulation amendment. It's just kind of a housekeeping thing, so if no date is included in the motion, we don't have to go back to the next meeting and redo it. Just whenever the note, the notice gets published, fifteen days after that, the regulation becomes effective. It's a simple, and I think it's been sitting in the server for a while, it just needs to get done.
Is there a standard publication date of approvals?
It depends.
Tuesday after the meeting.
Yeah, it depends when the meeting is for the deadline for the current, for when it gets published in the current, so there's no set. But usually, if towns don't say, give a date at the meeting, you know, if we know it ahead of time, we can tell you if not. Usually just set like a month out to be on the safe side, because you have to publish it within fifteen days. And then within fifteen days of being published, there's an appeal period by state statute that anyone can appeal the decision in the zone that the regulation affects. So that's an easy one.
And this, this came up actually last year because collectively, we. One, one of them, we, we neglected to set a date, and so we had to have, I think it was the fifteen Marriott, fifteen Farm Springs. Had to come back in, so they done this out, they did that everything. And then it got hung up on a technicality because we neglected to actually articulate a date. So, and we went around with multiple attorneys, and so it was actually attorney Decretions, our land use attorney suggested, just put this catchall in. In the regulation, so that if it happens again, it's, it's just covered, so. But yeah, it's a Connecticut general statute thing, if a date isn't set, then it technically never, so even years from now. If a, if a text amendment was done, there's no grant, it, it, if a date was never set. It technically didn't get changed, which is really, yeah.
And that's when we brought it back up, right, like, like the next meeting or something like?
Right, it was like two, two meetings later, because they went to flip the property and their attorney went to go through everything. And yeah, there was a, a number of interesting phone calls took place. So this will hopefully eliminate that set of interesting phone calls.
So pretty easy, no questions, all right. Next up, we just wanted to discuss residential parking, so as part of the state statutes that were passed last year. It set a minimum parking requirement for towns by default by state statute, which is one space per dwelling unit essentially. I think if it was a three-bedroom, it could be one point five spaces, so if you remember your seventy-four. Seventy-four Patterson Park took advantage of that state statute in order to have reduced parking. This is kind of in the spirit of that while understanding that the town does not have a comprehensive transit. In town, that we still are very dependent on vehicles, so it essentially state that. One-bedroom units, you're required to have one and a half spaces that allows for the expectation that some people are living alone. Some people are not living alone, or some people are having guests, allows a little extra parking spaces. And then just a standard two-bedroom will have two parking spaces, again, that falls under the same category of. Assuming that there's two people living there, if there's not two people living there, there's an extra parking space for guests or anything like that. Concurrent with this regulation change, you'll also be opting out of the state statutes. There's a, there's an opt-out provision in this, the accessory apartment regulation and. Think there's a third one, or we haven't gotten to that point yet, so. So when we go to that, we'll, we'll have you vote to opt out as well, so that way Africans won't be able to use that state statute anymore. They'll have to comply with the residential parking standards, and then it goes to town councils to approve the opt-out as well. For the state statute, a public hearing is required for the opt-out, so we're gonna do it concurrently, just hold one public hearing for both. And we'll be outside.
And then there are, so some of our specialty districts, like Unionville Center and Farmington Center. Some of the specialty districts have their own, so this is a general parking regulation. When it's not captured within a specialty district. So some of our specialty districts supersede these. And Unionville Center does it with parking for restaurants too, so normally our, our restaurant, our general parking requirement is one space for two seats. And Unionville Center, it's one, one space for three seats, because we understand inherently there's a little more overlap in the centers. Right, and shared, shared parking arrangements. So some of these specialty centers, specialty zones, even in the medical zones, the medical zones, only residential. But special innovation and midpoint development, midpoint that just came through, I think it had a one point two-five requirement. So it's a little lower, understanding that, again, there's a mixed use and multipurpose trip taking place. So, so those would stay, so anything that's a specialty zone that has a superseding parking right. Those would stay in place, this then just captures anything else.
So this is just the bare minimum, kind of the, the minimum bar and then?
Yes, correct, to, to ensure that there is enough parking for the people that would be living there and their visitors, having guests or. Just one more addition with this, it may seem sneaky, we'll also be removing a section about parking for billiard parlors. Because on the first page of your regulations, it says prohibited uses, and one of the uses is billiard parlors. So you have a requirement for parking for something you don't allow, so we're just gonna remove that out. A little bit of housekeeping while we're doing it. So that's all set.
Can I ask a question on parking, so what's, what does, what's the current ratio? For parking and what, just looking at what it's?
I think it's similar. The current is two spaces per unit for multifamilies and two spaces for a single family home. So it essentially, it allows one half space less if, if they're for one, single bedrooms, one bedrooms. Which, which kind of goes with the intent to reduce parking standards, because it's sometimes seen as an impediment to development. When you have to require X amount of parking spaces for, you know, a studio does not need two parking spaces. Especially if it's in a, a center area or a transit line, if you're in a studio, you're most likely not gonna have a car as well. It doesn't matter. So, the intent of the state statute amendment was to encourage. Less part, requiring less parking to incentivize development. Understanding that Farmington does not have a ton of transit, we do have transit, but it's not as widespread as some of the more denser towns.
Right, and that's sort of the main reason to opt out is because of our transit, we have a lot of cars, people need a car here in Farmington, more or less.
Correct, a little different, so that, again, the, the state statute was put in place, a blanket, right? Regardless of where you are in the state, and so in areas of New Britain, it makes sense, Hartford, New Haven, Stanford makes complete sense. And here, it's just gonna be difficult, it wasn't an issue for seventy-four Patterson Park, right? Because it has those two huge office buildings. It's one ownership, he's creating his own parking issue in amongst there. But in other areas, right, that's not necessarily, if we were down in wherever, you know, some other location in Farmington Center. And we were stuck with the one for two. Then there's nowhere to go, right, now you're parking in, you know, whatever. Vivid Hugh and Hartford Baking Company's parking areas, Naples parking areas, right, and it just starts to create a big mess, so. It doesn't, doesn't, that one size fits all doesn't necessarily work, so we did take a look to try to tweak and be mindful of it.
Sure, okay, thank you, thank you.
So when we, when we get to the accessory apartment regulation as well in the future, it's again the case of the state. Create a blanket regulation, while we're opt out of it, we have a regulation that kind of maintains the spirit of the original regulation. While still being a good fit for Farmington.
Sure, makes sense, thank you.
All right, and lastly, is chickens. So as you are aware, you had an application tonight to set a special permit for seventeen chicken, seventeen chick? Fourteen chickens. Hens, yes, no roosters. So currently, your regulations allow poultry by special permit, no matter how many you have. This would allow up to six, no more, no, six or less, I should say, there's some questioning with the wording. Six or less hens by right, just requiring that registration form be filed with the town in our office. So we currently do that for fences and accessory structures that are within certain regulations. They're not requiring to get a special permit, so if you just want to have a couple hens to lay eggs in your property, you just come in, fill out a form. We make sure that coop is in a good spot and we're all set. So part of this, we, you have a section, horses and stables, we'd repeal that section. And create a new section under section ten that's called farm animals, and it just maintains the horses and stables regulation as it is. And then adds a section for chickens and ducks, this is a draft, so we'll probably change some of the wording before your next meeting. When you accept it to set up a public hearing. Because we have a definition that says. Yes, we have a definition, poultry raising of less than, greater than six and not more than twenty-five, providing they're sustainably confined. So the, the special permit would only apply if you have more than six but less than twenty, you would not be allowed to have anything more than twenty. Unless it's a farm. So we just have a couple restrictions that you have a coop that be at least ten feet from the property line. In the rear yard and coops not more than fifty square feet and not more than ten feet in height. Just so you know, part of this was pulling some regulations from other towns, we didn't pull this out of thin air. So in Trumbull, they have a restriction on coops that it can't be more than eight feet by six feet, forty-eight square feet, we'll just make it an even fifty. Doesn't matter the dimensions, so currently the regulations for accessory structures is that it only has to be five feet off the side and rear property lines. We're recommending ten feet because chickens are up from sunup to sundown. It's not like a shed where you'd only be starting up your lawnmower and leaving or something like that, so it's generally creating a little more nuisance. Than a regular shed, so we're just having it be that it's ten feet off the side and rear property lines instead of five feet, just normally required. Going further, requiring that the poultry be within a fenced in area, so that they're not wandering. Around the property and other people's properties into the street, causing issues, so just making sure they mean their fence is in on the property. No male poultry, those cause the issues, so it's, it's a good way to keep everyone happy. Just going through it. Requiring that any waste materials be disposed of properly, so that there's not odor, flies, attraction to vermin, and is not in violation of the health code. So it just gives staff a way to enforce the regulation, if there's any issues that a neighbor's complaining about a smell or anything like that, we can either say. They're doing what's within the regulations or they're not doing it. And then just the registration form be filed, that's what we do for, as I said, accessory structures, less than twenty square feet and fences, such as filling out form. We'll make a folder for poultry registrations, and we just sign off it to make sure it's in the right spot. And we were able to keep track of who has them, and that way if someone says, my neighbor has chickens, are they allowed to? We can open up the folder and say, yep, they fill out this registration, they're in compliance with zoning regulations.
What it's doing is trying to get, you know, the families that truly, you know, at the, at various, particularly at spring holiday times. And want to get, you know, their tractor supply and see that cute little chicks, I want some chicks, all right. Yeah, that's great, but unfortunately, you know, they, they want four or five chicks, or tell them that, hey, it's a two hundred and ten dollar special permit fee. And the notification, the radius notification, they have to be sent out certified mail, there's another, sometimes sixty to a hundred dollars. And I think, you know, it, the, the chicken costs me like, whatever, thirty bucks, whatever, I don't know how much, I haven't, I haven't gone and purchased chicks, I don't know. But regard, like, the amount of permitting fee is more exorbitant than what it costs to set up to have the, the checks. So we're trying to reasonably accommodate a small home. You know, hen, hen house, but if somebody's looking to do, and we figured six works regardless of the zone, right? Whether you're in an R nine or R twelve or R eighty, again, it's something small that's being used for your own personal use. Someone that wants more, probably it, it requires then commission input. Or at least the opportunity for neighbors to, with a public hearing, and neighbors to have a better understanding of what may be going on. If you've got, you know, ten, fifteen chickens, gonna be in somebody's backyard, then the neighbors at least have the, the right to know that ahead of time.
Let me raise that threshold at some point, Shin, I thought, I'm trying to remember back, so that we weren't hearing like every.
Well, so we had talked about it, and this is, so this is the regulate, this is the regulation to get it, so at least those, so that bear. The zero to six, you're not, not gonna say. And then we, it can be reevaluated at any point, and certainly, you know, it can be discussed now. If you folks think, hey, you know, six seems low.
How does that, so we, so we've had a lot of, of those applications, since I've been here for years now. How does that, like, so how many were most people coming in with, where was, is that gonna drop the application significantly?
I think the ones, the ones that were doing it as a, as something for the kids. You know, they were only looking to do, some of them were only looking to do like three or four, they didn't want a whole bunch. Because it's just something for the, you know, to, to teach the kids and to have a few eggs of their, their own. So I think it's gonna capture, some of them just said, well, okay, since I'm here, right, I don't want to have to come back if. You know, one dies and we get two more, or next Easter, whatever, right? And, and look, at, at the end of the day, this isn't something that is highly police, right? If there's a call and we're getting complaints that so-and-so's chickens are running down River Road or Berkshire Lane. Then we're going in, okay, you know, Mrs. Jones, Mr. Smith, you need to get a registration in place or you're not compliant. It, it's just, if we get a call, then we, we, we deal with it, but I think it's going to, it should reduce that number. And help with the number of applications you're saying, and at the same time, somebody that wants more and is doing it to do their own little. Farm stand or, you know, little egg stand or to, you know, share with neighborhood, the, the neighbors or whatever, then it's gonna capture that.
Do we have a sense of how many properties have a poultry registration today? Because we register now, right?
So we could tell you how many have special permits.
Got it, now we're just, yeah, that's why we're trying to register, yeah, that makes sense.
So I can, I can tell you how many.
Any thoughts, any?
It makes a lot, ton of logical sense. Now, let me ask you this, I had a neighbor who had chickens, and I think they've all passed on into the great chicken coop in the sky. Does the permit go away then? So if she just, she got reinvigorated and want to get another eight chickens, she could do it.
If she had a special permit, technically the special permit runs with the land. So whereas a registration, well, I guess the registration would, that's a little different. Because if a shed, so a shed and fence registration runs with the land. Presumably, when you sell your home, you're not leaving your. I mean, presumably the coop would stay, so.
And that's more of the reason for the registration is to make sure that the coop is in the right spot. And that we know that you have less than six, six or less.
Just curious though.
Yeah, so, but it was, in theory, then the next homeowner, you know, if, if somebody sells property, next homeowner wants chickens, then.
And if they, if the next homeowner moves the coops or anything like that, we can go out and say, he just filled out a new registration form. And move it to five feet this way, and it'll be all set. Simple as that.
Should make things a lot easier, and even when we are called, because generally what happens is animal control calls us. The call that so-and-so's hens are out on the street, so she's putting hens, and then she called us to find out if there's a permit in place.
Is there a difference between ducks and, and chickens, so I know?
No, we would just call it poultry. Yeah, because they both lay eggs, people like duck eggs, people like chicken eggs. That's, yeah, we just call it poultry, so it doesn't have to be specifically for hens, it can be hens, ducks. Homing pigeons, but six is a lot of home and pigeons in Connecticut. All right.
I think, sounds, sounds good.
For the evening, I think. That's all we have for this evening. So there'll be more coming, but, uh, but that's all we have for this evening.
I don't think any of us saw the chicken conversation coming, so.
I know, we, that's right. So we split, so it was just for conversations. We'll get, uh, we'll get written documents out to everybody. But this way, at least you can kind of know where it's coming from and why. And, uh, and then we'll have to have public hearings on all these. So.
That's good.
Shannon, quick question. Um, so when we did the, uh, the affordable housing study, I, I know our percentage was fairly high. Um, since then we've approved a lot of other developments. Is there anything coming down for additional affordable housing plans? Has anybody proposed anything?
So, um, ta- technically no. So yes, we have approved a lot of housing. Um, none of it's hit this, well, fifteen farm springs for the Marriott has started, can start the demo and redevelopment. That's probably the easiest one. Uh, four oh two Farmington Avenue has started to clear land, but that's still in with the courts.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the other three have not started yet, but were various levels of traction on. Uh, and I have every reason to believe probably all of them will go. So the, with affordable housing, we have had, um, conversations with a couple of developers that have some interest. Um, we are supportive from a staff standpoint. Obviously it's got to make sense being right location, et cetera. But there's a couple of, uh, locations that have been chatted about. Um, that's also one of the next things on, on Garrett's, uh, list because with the affordable, and it's part of, and part of it, it's not just Garrett. It is us having a time in an evening like tonight where we're not here till ten o'clock and saying, okay, this was one of the items. And this is what we talked about in the affordable housing plan. And there were six or seven action items. And one of them is something called inclusionary zoning, which would be any housing development that comes before you. We can say if, if it's five or more houses, has to have an affordable component. Or we can also then have a buyout, basically provision of that. And, and I've got to learn more about it. Garrett may already know some more about it than I do, um, just because of different backgrounds, right? Um, but that buyout would be helpful because Farmington has affordable housing properties that our housing authority has that we own the property. But then the homeowners come in and mortgage the, the house. So their mortgage rather, like our mortgages are on the home and the land, right? They're just having to mortgage the house. So they're able to afford it because it's at a lower price point. Right? So we own, we own the land and they basically have the land rent, rent free or initially rent free. And then there's, um, modest rent after so many years. Um, but again, it, these owners and, and whether it's, uh, um, Farmingtons, we also have Snowberry Cabo, we have Cornerstone. They struggle to do them, the larger maintenance items, new boilers, roofs, siding or painting. Uh, you know, some of those things that, you know, we're like, okay, we know every so many years, right? It's like, okay, it's time we do the home equity or whatever we do. They don't have that same luxury. And it makes it really challenging. So the idea with this set aside would be, um, or I, yeah, the, the set aside for this inclusionary zoning, if they weren't going to do some affordable housing, then that would be a, a buyout would go into a fund that would be overseen by our housing authority to allow then for these maintenance projects to be done. Um, or even our own, the ones that Farmington does have, that when someone's ready to move out, we have the dollars to go in and do okay, some new carpeting and a fresh coat of paint and that type of thing. Just, you know, some of these homes are in the seventies or eighties. And what can we do to make them, you know, at least nice, you know, it doesn't, not state of the art, everything, but, uh, the general maintenance and upkeep. It's, we've got to get a little breathing room and roll up our sleeves. So it's, it's, um, there is a little bit of work to be done, but thank, we do have a couple of developers that have been in and are looking at a couple of properties and whether or not they, the financing for these is a little, is all, is challenging as well. So it's figuring out the appropriate financing and the mechanisms. So, uh, some of the things that's they, they can just be more challenging, I guess. I, I want to, uh, so, but they're, they're looking at what their, their options are. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
So part, one of the text amendments that will come is the accessory apartment regulation, which was identified as a step in the affordable housing plan. Um, and then as Shin mentioned there, eight dash three, I believe is a state statute that allows commissions to require a reasonable amount of units be designated as affordable or have money set aside into a housing trust. I believe that's the wording.
There you go.
Had a class on it a few weeks ago.
There we go. Um, so there will be more to come on that. Um, and yeah, so it's going to have to be a a dialogue, right? On, hey, this is what we're thinking and this is what we know and, um, and make sure, and it's not going to be a one size fits all. And it's like, something like inclusionary zoning, I think works well, particularly like, uh, uh, I think for a community for Farmington. Because it starts to integrate our affordable housing into the fabric of the neighborhoods instead of designating a particular area and, and location. Um, those certainly have their, their benefits and, and, and pluses to them. Um, but it's, it was interesting to speak with Nancy Parent who was director of, our director of community services. And started, I didn't even know that we had these houses that Farmington owned. And they're scattered throughout town. And then that's really, uh, in my mind remarkable and really the best way to, to do this. This is how it should be done. So. In my opinion. Uh, it's one, one way to, to, to try to do that. But yes, you're, you're right, Mike. Now with the, the number of u- units, once they start to come on board. And even with, you know, the Ridge Hampton subdivision, every time we're, we're doing building permits, our, our ratio, our percentage is, is dropping. Yeah. So.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Anybody else have any other questions?
When we said apartments, how about the ones behind the old Chucks? Are those being converted that we approved?
I'm sorry, the old Chucks.
Yeah.
The white ones?
Oh yeah, those are, those are condos and they have all been, um, purchased.
Oh, they have all been.
The office buildings back there.
Oh, behind, behind the white building.
Yeah.
Oh, though.
We approved a while ago.
I don't think, I think that, I don't even think I've seen a building.
Really?
Yeah, I haven't seen a building permit on those yet. Yeah. Yeah. So, but Unionville, um, has some traction. Um, so those should be going at the Charles House. And what was the other midpoint we just did in seventy-four Batters? And but Charles House is probably the only one that all of you folks haven't, haven't seen. And that should be coming and they might be coming. They may be coming back here to chat with you on a couple of things. So any changes at all will have to come before you. So we'll cross that bridge over.
I was going to say, is that the one with the potential?
There is contamination. Yep, there is. There, there's no potential.
That's what I thought. I wanted to use the right terms.
No, that's okay. There is contamination, but that's, they're working through DEP. And some of the delay, and so there's going to be a property transfer. The gentleman that took it through purchase, uh, permitting initially will not be doing that. The construction of this. So, uh, but in order to do the property transfer, it had to finish some steps at DEP. In order to do that transfer, uh, my last understanding is that property transfer could happen before the end of April, which would be this week.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know. It's been a little quiet the last two weeks, but I know they have been out. They've done, uh, drilling and deep hole testing. Some of it to satisfy DEP and some of it for foundations for the buildings and to understand, um, what they're going to need for the, uh, for the foundations. But it does seem that this over the six years I've been here, we've had every, every six months to a year, someone come in and want all the files. Okay. We got to a point, I just set up a share, SharePoint drive. I said, here's a link. Here's like, and then this one, finally they, they keep coming back. And there's a, well, what about this condition? What about this condition? I said, honestly, gentlemen, I never read it because I haven't refreshed my memory because I didn't expect to see you again. You're back here now. It's our third meeting. I guess I'll dust them off and I'll read them. So, uh, that's, um, yeah. So it, it would seem that this is actually going to go, which will be interesting for Unionville as well. Okay. If there's no other questions, we do have one last order of business to approve meeting.
One year. It's not twenty twenty one.
With a.
Can we have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of the April eleventh, two thousand twenty-two Town Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
I'll second.
All right, meeting adjourned. Well, we know, well, I forget. Oh, we got to vote too. I'm ready to go. I had it all down right till that point too.
Almost.
I almost made it right to the end.
So close.
All in favor.
All right.
Now Shannon?
I, yes, sir.
Meeting adjourned.